I'd like to declare the meeting officially open. To start off today's proceeding, I would like to remind everyone that in accordance with Council's Code of Meeting Practice, other than the public forum section, this meeting is being livestreamed. We will now progress to the acknowledgement of country and the prayer of council and affirmation. And I'd like to invite Pastor Claudio Alosi from Living Grace Christian Church, who will read the prayer of council. Could I please invite everyone who is able to to please stand?
Thank you and good afternoon, Mayor and councillors. Before we begin the proceedings, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors, past and present. The Kaburugal clan of the Darug nation, I also acknowledge that this land was assessed by peoples of the Dharawal and Daruk nations. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the well-being of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Today, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors, and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Father God, we commit these words to you, we commit this meeting to you, we pray that you would be amongst us, and we pray for unity, acceptance, and love. You're the God who's able to make all things abound. You are exceedingly, we can ask things of you, because you're the God who's exceedingly abundant and can do more than we could ever ask or think. So I pray that today would be of your will and your outcome, and we thank you for it in Jesus's name. Amen. Thank you.
Australians, oh, let us rejoice, for we are one and free. With golden soil and wealth for toll, our home is good by sea. Our land abounds in nature's gifts of beauty, rich and rare. In history's page, let every state advance Australia fair. In joyful strains that let us sing, advance Australia fair. Beneath the radiant southern cross, we'll toil with hearts and hands to make this come the wealth of us, renowned of all the lands. For those who've come across the seas, we've found lots of place to share. With courage, let us all combine to advance Australia fair. In joyful strains that let us sing, advance Australia fair.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. And thank you very much, Pastor, for your attendance and your kind words and prayers for us today. We have no councillors attending remotely. And our councillor Caliander's on her way, and we have an apology from councillor Higgy. Can I move that that be accepted? Seconded, councillor Rhodes, all those in favour, against, declare it carried. Next is the confirmation of the amendments from the meeting of the first of February. Move Deputy Mayor, seconded councillor Harrell, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. Are there any declarations of interest? No declarations?
May?
Yes, councillor.
Sorry, I'd just like to declare that I have been nominated for the state seat of Liverpool on behalf of the Liberal team. And as a result, as per the motion I moved back in August, I believe, I would like to donate this month's allowance to $1,000 towards the Australia, sorry, the Turkish Syrian disaster to Aus Relief, $1,000 to Core in Miller, Core Community in Miller, and the balance of my allowance to PCYC Miller, please. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, councillor, that's very, very kind of you. Can I ask if we can, happy for the CEO taking notice, where we are at with that policy and resolution that council made, that political candidates donate their, don't accept their allowance during campaigning?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm still having a look at that, and I will come back to the councillors by way of an email.
Thank you. We have no one in the public forum today. We'll now move on to mayoral minutes, which I have one. There's one about the Holy Miller, but I'll deal with that as part of the sponsorship, if that's okay with the councillors. But I do have one regarding the metro extension from Liverpool to Bankstown. If I can read it out, I would like to express our full support for the proposed metro line connecting Liverpool to Bankstown. This is an exciting project that will bring significant benefits to our local community, including improved transportation options, reduced traffic congestion, and increased economic growth. The City of Liverpool welcomes a New South Wales government decision to progress this project, and we thank them for their commitment to improving public transport in our area. We recognise that this is a significant investment that will provide long-term benefits to our region. However, it is disappointing to see the opposition's resistance to this project. We urge them to reconsider their position and support this vital infrastructure development. The proposed metro line will not only provide much-needed transportation solutions, but also create new opportunities and promote economic growth across the region. Therefore, I'd like to write to the New South Wales opposition leader to request that they change their position on this project and support the New South Wales government efforts to deliver better transport options for our community. Together, we can work towards building a more connected, sustainable, and prosperous region for all. And I'd like to move that, council, write to the New South Wales government to thank them for the $270 million investment into completing the business cases for the metro extension connecting Liverpool to Bankstown. Two, write to the New South Wales opposition leader to request that they change their position on the metro extension project. Three, notes that the three additional stations at Austro-Kems Creek and Osmoore could have been part of the Western Sydney Airport line to Parramatta. Four, continue to lobby the New South Wales government and the opposition for an express service from Liverpool to Bankstown via Carpenter to be established on the remainder of the T3 line when the metro opens in 2024. Any discussion?
I would just say, that's a fabulous motion, and I'm thoroughly behind the mayor's minute. It is very, very disappointing that when we look at the connection to our area with the other and to the airport, it's been neglected, and we need every opportunity we can to push for better connections for our areas so that they have easy access to all the jobs that are being created out in our area. We do have issues with traffic congestion, which is, will be an increasing issue, and without transport infrastructure like this, it is only going to get worse. So I commend the mayor for putting up the motion, the minute.
Well, I think the thanks should go to councillor Hadid, because I think it was in 2014, 2015, he originally put this motion to council. And at that point in time, there was no planned extension from Bankstown to Liverpool. But through his motion, and through the council staff at the time, who worked very hard, and they should be acknowledged, I remember going in very, very cold weather, early mornings at Liverpool station, getting submissions about the extension, that the government did change its policy, and it's noted in their documentation through the significant submissions that were received by the community, organized through councillor Hadid's motion and through the council staff. So I think, I think the thanks goes to councillor Hadid and the council staff for putting it together. Any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried, just going to call a division. All those in favour? Against?
Oh, we should sign.
That's recorded as against. Next item is Plan 01, page 35, and I'd like to move that we defer this matter for discussion at the next, for a workshop regarding the LEP plan review. A second, second councillor McNaul. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. If I could just, sorry, I need that recorded. Is that everyone in favour of deferral? Yep, this has to be recorded. Thank you, that was unanimous. Next item is Plan 02, page 53, quarter report on clause 4.6 variations. Happy to move that, move Deputy Mayor, seconded. Councillor Moon, any discussion?
Can I just ask, is there an opportunity to discuss some of the contents of this report when we have the workshop as well for the, for the first planning matter? Just that, you know, some of the additional height concessions are particularly in areas that we don't love height concessions. Thank you.
Councillor Rhodes?
Yes, and the minimum street frontage as well, if we could discuss that.
Yeah, wonderful. Okay, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried, that was unanimous as well. Next item is Community and Culture, COM 01, page 60, about grants and donations, I'd like to move the motion, and with one addition to it, oh, sorry, two additions, that, and this was the mayoral minute that I was going to put, that we provide $10,000 sponsorship to the Sri Sanatandam Pratindada Saba of Australia for its holy festival that was held last weekend in Northumberland Street car park. The other point is to amend the policy to allow applicants to apply for within one month of their, post their event. Yep. Oh, sorry, here we go. Thank you. Yep, so the recommendation, basically the recommendations on page one and two of my mayoral minute, if they can be put on there. George? And then just, is there a second, or then speak, second, councillor McNaul?
Just a question in regard of the $10,000, is that on the top of using the car park?
On top of using the car park? I'm not sure what arrangement they had with the car.
Yeah, with the car park, because once they use the car park for capitalise, which is being, with the council, will lose a lot of fees. So is the $10,000 on the top of the using or including?
Yeah.
I'll ask the director, Tina Barna, to please respond to that.
Thank you. Through the CEO, I'm not aware of the charges that have been instilled for the car park. I might have to pass it over to our Director of Property. I do know the event went through in the approval process, and this, and they did meet the criteria for the, for the $10,000. We did a, we went through the process, but in terms of the car park, I'll pass it on to Julie.
Thank you, Director, and through the, through the CEO, I do have the Manager of Property Services online, John Milicich, who might be able to actually comment about the subject.
Before we get to John, speaking for the motion, I'd like to point out that, once again, this Sanatam has been doing the, the festival lights in Northumberland Street car park for over 10 years, and they're now doing this as a new event. Secondly, they did put the application in and were approved for the grant. However, the policy states that it has to happen, you've got to put that, you've got to, council needs to approve it before the event, that's what the current policy is. So that's why I was saying, let's change this. The options were to call next Saturday a meeting just for the sake of approving this, which I think would have, would have, would not have been used proper time, probably would have cost $10,000 to do. But I think, they're, rest assured, and I'm happy to, through the CEO, pass on to the relevant director, that they have gone through the proper process and they were eligible for funding. Councillor Green?
I just have a question on retrospectivity.
Yes.
In terms of, you know, which is all fine if what you're saying, it's happened in this case, maybe some flexibility in the current policy to make decisions on a case-by-case basis, if they met criteria on a whole range of other things. The problem that I'm, that I'm thinking about with retrospectivity is if there's nothing to really explain what the event is about, and just a simple approach to either a mayor or councillor, whatever, would qualify for retrospective funding, then, you know, then we've strayed from fair and equitable. So I'm just wondering how that is managed, that's my.
So councillor, there is actually no change to the policy of making the grants. Someone still has to apply, someone still has to meet all of the criteria, and we still have the discretion to approve, not approve. None of that changes. What has occurred in this case, and it has occurred previously, is that due to whatever reason, we can't get a grant that we completely approve, ticks all the boxes, to a council meeting prior to the function taking place, because we meet once a month. This is a perfect example. So had this application been put in earlier, had this application been available for our last council meeting, you would have had a recommendation, as you have with the other grants, to approve it, and then it would have been up to council to approve it or not to approve it. What's occurring here is that we're seeking to amend the policy to allow a little bit of flexibility for one month. So if it doesn't make this council meeting, it can still make the next council meeting within the one month, and if it ticks all the boxes, you still have the authority to approve the grant. That's all this done, and this is why we limit it to one month, because you will meet within month to month.
So would that be like a note as an addendum as to, you know, that, what that actually means, what flexibility and, and retrospectivity means in that case, that it's not just, it's linked to an application, it's linked to, so it's, it's very clear.
Yeah, so it is, it's a, it's a functioning of the policy.
Yeah.
Where the policy states that it's got to be done before, now it's saying, well, you've got that one month.
Yeah.
But it doesn't go against the process. I think councils have made it quite clear through our numerous debates we've had in this chamber about, oh, look, we want proper process to be followed. That's why, once they, once they applied and they were approved, and I was notified they were approved probably two, three weeks ago, we said, well, what are the options now? And I think, let's deal, let's deal with the cause of the issue, which is the policy, and let's fix this up, because they've done this, and they've done it before.
So councillor, if I may, if you look at recommendation number two, it specifically states all that you're saying. It amends the grants donation and community sponsorship policy to allow to access and approve retrospective funding for community events within a one-month timeframe from the date of the event. So in all other respects, the policy remains the same, because this is the only amendment it's making, so it actually says all the things that you're asking it to say.
Wonderful.
Just to say something, I don't want anyone to get me wrong, I'm in five hours of this event, you know what I mean? But the issue is just to bring to everyone attention, the $10,000, it does not reflect the actual amount of the grant, because when you use a bloody whole floor of the car park, which has been around like 80 or 100 cars, and the council will lose a lot of revenue out of it, you know what I mean? So I want the figures to reflect the real amount of the grant awarded to the, or granted to the community.
I think, good point, Mr. Deputy Mayor, my rec, I'm just trying to remember the parking meters, I'm pretty sure they're off on the weekend, or at least from 1 o'clock, they're off on the weekend, aren't they?
No, it's not off, it's up to 12:30, I think.
I think the parking restriction is on, you still have 1P parking till 1 o'clock.
Still a lot of events coming on.
Yeah, but it's not metered.
Yep.
All right, but yes, we'll look into that. Any further discussion?
If I could just comment and thank staff for the grant to the Moorbank Soccer Club for their Goldmouth Astro turf, and please, if we could work with them as efficiently as possible to have that moved forward, that would be great, they're in dire need of those improvements. Thank you so much.
Sorry, while we are on the topic of grants, can I just grab a follow-up to a question I asked on notice at the last meeting regarding how council is working with the delivery of grants from other levels of government? So I think there was some specific questions around Hoxton Park Reserve and Hammondville Oval, and just get an update as to where that's at.
Yes, through the CEO, with Hoxton Park, that, that grant was on the provision of integral energy, so we're still working with them around that approval and the like. Any other grant that comes through that goes through our criteria process, which we work with the INE Directorate to make sure that it's compliant, and we also work with property around landowners' consent. That one's the current live one that I, that I'm aware of, and others are, I don't, not aware of. Thank you.
Just to, through you, Chair, I'm very concerned, because the life of that grant expires on the 30th of March, and we miss out on $30,000 if we don't get our skates on. So I'm pretty concerned that we're sent to lose money that we can't afford to.
I'll, I'll just take to have a look at that tomorrow and get back to you, councillor.
All right, wonderful, very good point, councillor Caliander. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. Next item is Corp 01, page 66, delegation to the CEO. I'd like to move that we defer this to the Governance Committee for review. Do I have a second, there?
I'm happy to second.
Second, councillor McNaul, any discussion?
Can I ask during that discussion in the Governance Committee, whether we might be able to have a history of maybe the last 10 years of delegation, just so that we can track anything that's changed over that time, if that's possible, when we go to that committee, please?
And I'd just like to make a comment, that I think that it's a good time for council to have a look at the delegation, so that we fully understand and don't make mistakes moving forward, so I thank council for doing that. Thank you.
Wonderful. Great, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried.
So just to clarify, Mayor, this is to defer?
Defer. Yep, to committee for discussion. Okay, next item is page 73, Corp 02, the functional design review. I'm happy to move the motion, seconded councillor Rhodes. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it unanimous. Next item is page 82, Governance Committee Meeting Procedures. I'd like to move that we adopt the option two, so that's the one without delegation for the committees. So without delegations, however, we meet on the third Tuesday rather than the second Tuesday, and the minutes go up to the next council meeting.
I'd like to make a further amendment to that, if I may.
Yes.
The point six, council pilot a three-month trial to determine if successful. Some of these committees only meet three months, so you're not really getting any sort of information, because you only have one meeting. And the point is that the attendance is already documented in the reports of the minutes, so that's already been done, so there's no need for that to be done. And the second issue is, council already knows that it only takes a resolution of council to make changes to these committees, and we live with that continuously. So I would just remove point six, because it is not relevant.
Yep, yep, cool. And so while we add that as well, remove the word March to April 2023. Yep, sorry.
Thank you. I'll ask the acting director of Corporate Services to respond to that. Through you, Mr. CEO. Councillor, that doesn't, doesn't apply to the committees, the committee, the community committees listed under point seven, it applies to the Governance Committee.
It's got data on attendance at community committees in point six that I'm reading. Council piloted a three-month trial to determine if successful, including providing data on attendance at community committee meetings. You don't need a pilot to do that, it's already gathered, that information is already gathered.
I don't think that was the intention. If I could ask through the CEO, the coordinator of governance to add to that, please.
This one? Oh, sorry. It was to trial the successful, to see if the governance committees were successful, but to also include data about the community attendance, so it's to do the both. So it was to trial the governance committees and also include data about community attendance.
Well, I'd still remove the community attendance, because you've already got it. You've got it at every minute that is then passed by council.
And councillor, that's the data that we'll collect and consider when we're looking at the governance committees, so you're 100% correct. We'll have that data from the minutes, but we still need to collate it from all of those minutes to have.
And from a three-month trial, you're going to have the data from possibly two or three meetings.
The vast majority of this is relating to the governance, the new governance committee structure, and the three months will give us a very ample time, since they're meeting monthly, to be able to gather that. I mean, if we extend it to six months, we may discover after month two it's not working, then we'd have to bring it back. So this is why we're saying we'll look at it over the first three months. But it's a matter for the council if they want to vary that time period.
Sorry, councillor Caliander?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this might relate to a, an amendment or a question that I requested when this item came before us at the last council meeting, around collecting data on the committees and the attendance, and so I would actually argue strongly against removing point six.
Councillor Green?
Might I suggest that, for clarity's sake, that we hit the insertion of governance committees, so the council piloted a three-month trial to determine the effectiveness of the governance committees, just to really make it crystal clear as to what the focus is?
Happy with that.
Happy? Done. All right, I'll put the motion then, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it unanimous. Next item is page 87, Corp 04, Independent Professional Advice. I'd like to move that we defer this to our Governance Committee for discussion. Second, there?
Happy to second that with a question.
Any discussion?
Yes.
So just, just to clarify what's being requested here, is the intention to defer this to the Governance Committee to get consultation in terms of the procedure, or, and then for it to come back to council, or will it be determined by the Governance Committee?
I think if we look at now, using the committee structure properly, it's probably the appropriate place to have a proper detailed discussion amongst where we can get into it, and then whatever is resolved there will come back to council for hopefully ratification, or at least, yeah, I think ideally, that's probably the best place to do our really in-depth discussions on things as well, if these committee structure works properly.
If I may, through the Chair, my question is, this has been brought up in council before, and I remember from the last time that it, I think it was written into a financial policy, that councillors could attain legal advice, and if that legal advice was used in a resolution that was passed by council, they could then approach the CEO for his discretion as to whether the council or who attained that advice could be reimbursed for those legal costs. Could we have that clarified at the same time that we discuss this?
Wonderful, great. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. Next item is Corp 05, the Quarterly Budget Review, page 100.
Move it.
Move Deputy Mayor, seconded councillor Harrell, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those, oh, sorry, discussion?
Yeah, just, just a couple. Thank you for the report, and it is clear in the report, the difficulty, the constituents are having difficulty understanding is that following the election in 2021... Thank you for the report, and it is clear in the report, the difficulty, the constituents are having difficulty understanding is that following the election in 2021, we were facing an approximate, I think it was 12 million, and don't hold me to these figures, net debt operational result. And I can see that the proposed net operational result for the 2223, we reduced that again to 8.3 million. Is council on target to deliver a balanced budget by 2024-23? 2420, uh, 25, 2425, sorry.
I'm happy to refer that to the acting director of corporate services, who's well and truly on top of this, councillor.
Actually, Mr CEO, I'm going to direct it to the CFO because he has the history as well as the forward estimates.
Thank you, through the CEO. The current version of the long-term financial plan, which actually demonstrates financial sustainability, is indicating that we will be in a above zero or greater than zero position by 30th of June 2025. However, I will qualify this statement by saying if council makes some decisions as part of this year's budget process, that may vary the situation, but we'll just wait and see.
It's up to you councillors.
Thank you very much for that explanation, and everybody is clear on that now, I'm sure. Another question that we've got is on page 135, the environmental levy. Our greatest expenditure, of course, is the bush regeneration followed by the, it's all the regeneration work that we're doing. I was wondering if we could at some stage have a closer look at that as to how that money is being spent, and if there is any opportunity that we can look at at reducing some of those costs.
Council, that is being looked at, as well as many other aspects in relation to those areas. And I hope to come back to you in the near future and discuss some of that with you.
Okay, thank you.
Right, I'll put the motion, all those in favour please raise your hands, against, declare it carried. Next item is page 136, Corp 06, biannual progress report, December 2022.
Happy to move that way.
Second to councillor Rhodes, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour please raise your hands, against, declare it carried. Next item is Corp 07, page 139, investment report, January 2023. Move, deputy mayor, second to councillor Harrell, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour please raise your hands, against, declare it carried. Next item is Corp 08, page 150, the 2023 National Government Local Assembly.
Happy to move that way.
Move councillor Rhodes, seconded, councillor McNaught, any discussion?
Just one quick question, what is the close date for the possible motions?
Refer to the CEO.
Through the CEO, it's 24th of March.
Thank you.
So in the recommendation, thank you, Miss Mayor. Recommendation number one, any councillor wishes to attend the 2023 National General Assembly of Local Government, notify the council support officer by 16 March 2023. So we need your notification, and then the council determines whether to submit any motions for debate at the national assembly. That's what's being sought.
And that's going to be closing on the 24th of March? Because I think they still receive motions right up until the last week of the thing. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Caliander?
Given the deadline for the close of, or for the submission of motions is before the next council meeting, is there any way that we can either speak with them to sort of potentially have motions submitted after our council meeting? Or is there any way that we can work with them to do that?
Can I recommend this is a strategy, that if you have a motion, get six signatures on it, then we can make it happen without going to a council meeting? We had this issue with, I think last year, didn't we?
Yeah.
It was the same sort of thing.
Well, if that's the case, excuse me councillor, if that's the case, then perhaps those motions that have received six signatures, or that have, you know, received the required support, come back to the 27th meeting to be publicly, you know, be on public record. Because I think it's important that the motions that we take to the Alga Conference are on public record.
Yep. So basically then that point would be, just so that, on point two, that any motion submitted to the mayor and CEO with six signatures on it gets gets sent off for debate to National Assembly?
Is it possible for us to receive and discuss those motions at the council briefing prior to the next meeting?
When's the next? When's the next one? What day did you say again, sorry, Mr Georgakis, was it the 20? 24th, I don't know. I think there's a couple of people here, I think a couple of people are busy till the 25th, I would say.
Well, I think they would be, but I guess.
Does anyone have any motions they want to put up?
I may have one in the later part of this meeting. But the point is, previously, we would be given the opportunity to present motions, possible motions, could be debated on the floor, and if passed, it went through as a motion. In this circumstances, we don't have that opportunity.
Yeah, I think through the CEO, I think Mr Georgakis has.
Through the CEO, what councillor Rhodes is referring to was the state conference. So the New South Wales for the local government conference, they did have like a hard deadline and a soft deadline, if you like. The soft deadline was for the purposes of submitting any proposed motions internally so they can look at it. And then if they needed to come back to those councils to either fine-tune it or suggest alternate wording because it proposed something similar to other councils, for example. They liked that earlier deadline. However, the National General Assembly, different organisation, I'm not sure, they've just given us one deadline, so that's the one that I'm working towards.
Well, Mr Mayor, if we can ask the National Association if there is a deadline to submit any motion or not.
Yeah, I think we're all mature enough to work this amongst ourselves outside of the council meeting. So I think we can, George will get back to us.
I agree, we should be, but I guess because the most, whatever motion, if it is endorsed in that way, is coming from all of council, then all of council should be aware of what that motion is, so.
It shouldn't be just one.
I agree, we should take responsibility and look at the agenda for the conference, and they should have some ideas about what motions that they'd like, you know, that could be, and we take it from there.
Yep.
We could work together, I mean, I know it's a radical idea, but we could.
Councillors, if I could maybe suggest this, because I know this has been done in previous councils. Firstly, the most important part of the motion, if I may say, is that anyone who wishes to attend, please let me or the council support officer know by the 16th of March. That's number one, because we have to make arrangements. So that's imperative that we get on track with that. Secondly, if six councillors wish to forward to me, with your permission and your authority, a motion that you wish to put, happy to discuss it with you. I can then make sure that that motion is sent to all of the councils. If they want to comment on it, get back to me. And I can also have my people check with the conference. If, you know, if there's already three motions of identical, then they're not going to accept ours if they've got. So I can easily have that working for you. And I think that's a much better way than to drag you all back, have a meeting, get you to pass the motion, and then by the time I send it through to the conference, they tell me six other councillors have beat you to the punch.
All right.
But that being said, it does add power to that motion if we really want to get it through, if it has got all the councillors, councils that are involved. So I would say we submit the motions on any case if we want it to go forward.
If the six send it to me, I will send it to the councillors with a simple question, is there any objection? If there's no objection, I would submit it to the conference on the basis it's unanimous. It has the endorsement of the entire council.
And going forward, that, you know, we would, anything that we're lobbying for, the work would already be done, you know, through committees, we would have already had discussed it. So just a matter of saying, well, you've worked on this, we're putting it forward. You mean, you know, ideally, things should be fed through the system, I think is what the goal is. And just to point out, CEO, I think if you can make sure that the rooms that you do hire for anyone who goes, I think to make sure they actually have heaters in them. I think some of the councils who went last year would appreciate that. Because I think two or three councils came back very, very unwell because they froze in Canberra with no heating in their rooms. I know we're trying to save money, but.
Once I have a list, I will speak to you councillors, I will ensure that we have. And this is why the earlier we can get in, the earlier we start making arrangements, the better opportunity we have of actually securing fit and proper accommodation. If I start making inquiries at the end of May, we're not getting anything.
Yeah, done, great, I'll put the motion, all those in favour please raise your hands, against, declare it carried. Next item is smart bin report, move.
I'll happy to move that with an amendment to it.
Yeah, yes.
Yep, the amendment is simple, that council receives and notes the report, but council provide a financial report on the anticipated cost savings to council by utilizing smart bins. I mean, it was a good report that tells us that we can save money because we don't have to go and pick up the bins quite so often. But there was no real accounting for the financial situation, that this is a good direction for council to go into. So I was just wondering if we could get that information provided to us as well.
Yes councillor, Mr Mayor, if I may, it's a good point. But can I also indicate that the whole purpose of the trial was to actually give us the figures to see what the cost saving is? So if we currently collect the bin every day, for example, under this trial, we only have to collect it once a week, we can easily work out the cost savings of that in the trial.
And that's what I'd like to see.
Is there a second for that motion?
Yes, but I also have a question.
Yep, second to councillor Caliander, yes.
So in the known issues, it talks about obviously the buildup of waste and some of the drawbacks of, say, not collecting the bins as often as possible. In the interim until sort of the trial is completed, or until the report is developed as a follow-up to the trial, what are we going to do about addressing the known issues?
They're being looked at, but can I also indicate that?
The microphone, please.
They're being looked at councillor, but can also indicate the clarity that the trial may show that we've got to collect the bins more than we're actually collecting them. So in fact, there won't be a cost saving, there will actually be a cost increase. But where you hope to mitigate that, there'll be areas where the bin didn't need to be collected every day. So there'll be, but then there'll be areas where in fact you have to collect the bin more often. That's the purpose of this trial. But we'll look at the whole thing from day one. The acting director of city presentations, of course, has just heard what you've said, and he'll be on it straight away.
What's the timeframe in terms of, I guess, managing known issues with completion of the trial and implementation of the recommendations?
Yep, I'll refer that to the acting director of city presentation, Jason Burton. Are you able to give the timeline?
Thank you, through the CEO, I've got the actual technical expert, Carl Adley, the Waste Project Officer, who could probably help us with the timeline. Agree with the sentiments of council in relation to return on investment on a relatively small-scale trial of two bins. I can say that in the interim, because of some of the issues in relation to improper waste disposal, we'll revert to our normal collection regime to recover that training deficit. But if I could just again refer to Mr Carl Adley, the Environmental Waste Project Officer, for any comments on the duration now of the trial.
Thank you, through the chair, the trial was three months, it's now been completed. It was taken, took place in two specific locations within the Liverpool CBD. As has been correctly pointed out, whilst there were some evidence of the bins were being used by some members of the community, there was also a considerable amount of dumping that was occurring around the bins. And unfortunately, that did mean that there was no overall operational efficiency gained because the complaints from the nearby people indicated that we had to go out just as frequently as we would have if we had the original bin set up. And as our director has just pointed out, it has reverted back to the usual collection regime so that we don't have, we don't have those problems occurring. Those bins have now been removed, and they are back to a normal bin enclosure. In terms of identifying locations where we could potentially achieve some operational efficiencies, we should be able to have a review for you to look at before the next council meeting.
Can you put your microphone on councillor?
Sorry, so just to confirm, those bins that are pictured in the known issue section of the report in the council papers have reverted back to ordinary collection?
That is correct.
Cool, thank you.
All good, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, declare it carried. Next on line is committee reports, committee 01, page 160, Environment Advisory Committee.
Happy to move those reports, but I need a couple of questions about the Environment Advisory Committee.
Yeah, just do it, there's only two, so just keep on, we'll just do the environmental advisory one first.
Okay, all right, just on page 163. A second request has been sent, the reason why we're asking these questions is because we didn't have an environmental committee meeting, and so the constituents are anxious to know what these reports, these answers were. A second request has been sent to the ATC in regard to the required work at Coopers Creek, and that council was waiting a reply, have we had that reply yet?
Thank you, I'll refer that to the acting director of infrastructure environment, John Lack.
Through the CEO, thank you for the question councillor, unfortunately I have to take that question on notice and get back to you, that's okay?
That's fine, that'll be good. And when that notice comes back, if we have had no reply, then perhaps what is the action that council will be taking in that case? Then in page 163, point three, the soil contamination at New Brighton Golf Club, has council received the reports on New Brighton's investigation into the soil testing?
Again, I'll ask the acting director to respond.
Through the CEO, unfortunately I have to take that question on notice as well, I'm afraid.
Excellent, and then the last one, thank you very much. Consultants are looking into subsoil drainage and water sources as a part of the design for the new retaining wall to stop future landslips along the Georges River. When will the new designs be delivered?
Acting director?
Through the CEO, the detailed designs for, I believe you're referring to the Chipping Norton landslips. The detailed designs are expected this month, in fact, in March, after which we'll be able to identify the cost, identify funding source for delivery, and undertake works.
And are we to receive the answers to those questions before the next council meeting?
Yes.
That's excellent, thank you very much, and I move both the committee meetings.
No worries, moved, seconded, councillor Caliander. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare carried. So that's both committees, done.
Yes, before we do move on to questions with notice, ma'am, can I please move an urgency motion?
Yeah, what's your urgency motion councillor?
I've just sent it to George, so it should come up onto the screen, but it's in relation to 84 Memorial Avenue.
Just bear with me for a moment.
Sure.
Is there any other points, or is that, does it stop at point three?
Those are the three points requested, and, yep.
Can I ask, in determining urgency, why is it urgent?
So, given the. So given the, the report in the Daily Telegraph that, that said that the Canterbury Leagues Club would be taking this to the department, I believe we should have something as a matter of record in terms of our position and the fact that, you know, we have previously refused this. And I believe that it was sent to the Western Sydney Planning Panel recently as well. So I'm, I'm not sure what the outcome of that was, which is why I've put a question mark in the background to it. But I think, you know, given it's getting some public attention, we, it really should come before council as well.
So can I just ask, has the panel met on this matter? I know that we were all ruled out from being on the panel.
Through the CEO, yes, they have met and they have committed to making a decision by Friday. So two options from there. If they seek to endorse the review, it will go to the department for a gateway determination. If they don't, obviously that will end the process.
Okay.
Given it will go before Friday, I think that makes it more urgent.
Yeah, so look, I'm, I'm happy to accept that as an urgent, urgency motion. And the, if we can maybe add some slight, some, add something on to the motion, I think that could be a, you know, some more reasoning into, I think that would be good. But we can now allow debate on the motion, so.
Can, can I just have clarification about the legality of councillors interfering with DAs?
What's, so what's happened is council, council has resolved and has stated its position through its rejection of the planning proposal. And that was, I think, a unanimous decision of council. So it's not a DA, it is, it's a re, being the rezoning applicant, being the rezoning application. What's happened is this then went to- Someone's talking, isn't it? Because it's gone to the plan, because it's gone to the planning, the members of the planning panel from the council representatives, we were told that we're not, we're not able to participate in it because we've already participated in and indicated when therefore we're not, we're not by. So to councillor Calander's point, there's nothing that stops us from lobbying, which effectively this is, and reiterating our position, you know, with regards to our objection to this proposal. So councillor Calander, you want to speak for your motion?
Yes, please, Mayor. Look, I think, as I've mentioned in the background, there is a lot of background to this particular issue. It's, you know, long-running. Currently, the, the land is not zoned and, you know, council has determined on a number of occasions that that particular piece of land cannot support what the Canterbury Leagues Club is intending to put forward. And yet despite council's objections, despite the fact that we have had such a long-running masterplan process that's only now received a little bit of funding, they're now seeking to sort of, you know, circumvent council, go directly to either the department if they don't get what they want through the Western Sydney Planning Panel. And I think this is such a poor, poor outcome for residents who really need that green space that Woodward Park presents, especially when you look at the, you know, the projected growth in apartments within the Liverpool CBD and the fact that Woodward Park is sort of seen as, as a, as the green space requirement for a lot of those developments as well. And the local infrastructure can hardly support over a thousand apartments as well as, what is it? Multiple high-rise buildings within that, within that small stretch of land. You know, we already know that that intersection of Hoxton Park Road and the Hume Highway is one of the worst pinch points within the entire state. And to add more traffic, to add more congestion to that, that intersection is just, you know, it beggars belief. And so we, we really need to be highlighting that this is on the table to residents who, you know, who may not be aware. And, you know, some of the most vulnerable people within our community live within, within stone throw of that area and rely on Woodward Park, they rely on the Whitlam Centre, and they rely on that green space for, you know, for amenity. So I think it's, it's really important that council undertakes our due process in making sure that our residents are aware and informed and have their opportunity to participate and lobby as well.
I think the, do you have a secondor for your motion? Second to councillor Amun.
Just, just on that point, right, I just want to, you know, I think that when you go to the Woodward Park Master Plan version, probably 10 we're up to, I think, over the years of Liverpool City Council, we've definitely done a few of them and they all have different things. You know, the, is there a perfect one? Probably not. And, you know, hopefully one day, you know, we now have forty-odd million dollars, or forty or forty-odd million, I think it was, to Brickmakers, forty-three million dollars to Brickmakers Creek. So I think in, 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 in looking at this, the, I think we all believe that there should be something greater that happens in that area. And when that something greater does happen, then maybe that's a trigger for something else for that. And I think it's, I think we should let that be known as part of this. The also, what should happen is the, when you look at the challenge we have in Liverpool from a traffic point of, of view, is that the north-south train line, you know, which runs through the city, along the river, the north-south river, and the north-south Hume Highway all cause massive traffic issues, hence why you have the significant congestion. And a metro would extend it to Liverpool, would allow it, a station at Woodward Park at the TUA would create a really good transport interchange, taking the pressure off of, off of that. So I think that if, to do this councillor, I would, what I would like to move is amendments to it, that we add into it, not just our way of policy development, but our vision, which you kind of mentioned, the Woodwork Master Plan, but what it actually should entail.
Can I just pause you there for a second? Because I think this is not directed at government, this is not directed at sort of the, the decision-makers in that sense. This is very much directed at Canterbury Leagues, who are the proponents in this particular circumstance and their attempt to circumvent the process and circumvent the community, which I think is the, the core point here. You know, we have processes in place and, you know, the community members should know that this is what's on the table. And I think, you know, future vision, future infrastructure and what that looks like aside, this is the main point and that's the most urgent point.
So same, write to, get, ask them to, I want to write them to, to withdraw their application, so on. So I get that point one. So if we were to say in that one, the Woodward Park Master Plan and based, yeah, that's fine. But the two, I just don't understand what the point is then on to, what is the, the point of a point two?
So point two, we obviously have a range of information that we provide to our residents on different proposals, on, on different things that occur within the community. I think the nature, given it's been reported in the media, you know, council has an, I, in my view, I'm not sure if this view is shared by my fellow councillors, but council has an obligation to say this is what is being proposed for this stretch of land and to clarify that council has refused this. Council does not support it. But what do, what do community members think? Because currently what is on the table is that Canterbury Leagues as a proponent is going to go to the department if they do not get what they want out of the Western Sydney Planning Panel.
Can I just add to that, please, Chair?
Yes, councillor.
The fact that we don't have local media in terms of local newspaper that will inform all residents. Not all residents here would think, read the Telegraph, I mean subscriber online. You know, this is something that, that residents should be aware of. And in fact, I'm just wondering, how many consult, community consultations have been conducted as part of the Woodward West, Woodward Park Precinct Master Plan?
I'll refer to the CEO.
Oh, yes.
I'll refer, how many, any idea how many consultations we've done on, Julie, oh sorry, to the CEO?
Through the CEO, and thank you for the question councillor. We had a three-year engagement plan around Woodward Park Master Plan that included literally dozens of consultation processes.
And I guess that's what we're saying, you know, in supporting this motion, is that a lot of like resident views, council time and effort and energy has gone into developing the Woodward Precinct Plan, could be the Master Plan. This kind of development will not only undermine the precinct, the Master Plan, it will utterly destroy it. And I mean, that's, as a council, I mean, I, I feel outraged that a corporate that makes a lot of its money out of poker machines and the misery of, of a lot of people can come into the community and say, well, this is what we want. We'll circumvent what the process is to get what we want. And I, I think that's a really poor outcome for our residents and our community. I'd like to see us as a council, you know, in terms of really fighting for that and letting community know this is what's going on.
So look, I'm, put it this way, the, I'm at the point one and point three. I think we've already done point two. It's ultimately now going through a process where it's up to Gateway. So Gateway now make, can make a decision and whether it goes through or for submissions to the community, all that sort of stuff is just going to be, you know, noise when it's not going to be achieving anything.
So, just, I, I have a question.
Just one second, councillor Moons.
In prior master plans, there was the Oasis Programme, which was very similar to what these guys get their money from. And that was supported by previous councils. Now, I, I believe that the community awareness has already gone through. Part one, writing to the CEO is something that's urgent because we've got something that's coming up in the next three, four days. However, we need to change point two and point three.
So can I just make a point on that? I don't believe the community and what count, previous councils supported in terms of the Oasis Programme was appropriate because, you know, previously this council was sacked as a result of it. So I think it's very dangerous to say that just because it was supported previously that it's appropriate to, to let it go through to the keeper this time. That's my first point. And secondly, what has, what has gone out to the community in terms of, you know, submissions, what they have, what they have provided feedback on is not what, what this is, right? So what they expect is not what is on the table and what Canterbury Leagues is proposing with this, with this rezoning submission. And so it's really important for them to have the opportunity to provide feedback on what this proposal is because it is at odds with the master plan that was, that they had an, an opportunity to comment on. And, you know, that's our responsibility to make sure that our community is informed and aware of what is occurring.
Yep, yep. So I've been advised that, that point two, that if it does proceed through Gateway, that's the appropriate time to want to take consult, to, to do that, right? But prior to that, it's.
In, in that case, can I amend to, to read, make it clear via, you know, councils, via councils' channels that this council did not support this proposal?
Well, it's already there. We've done that. Like, it's already, we rejected it outright. The story, the newspaper story you talk about says council rejected it, so.
Right, but on our website or, you know, other places where residents might, might have a look. Because I think, you know, this idea that residents sit there and think, oh, you know, I wonder, you know, I wonder how council voted on this and go back through our minutes. I think that's, you know, no, nobody does that. So having an easy way that people can say, okay, yes, you know, council does not support this, is imperative.
Let's refer to the CEO, then, if you want.
Councillor, can I make a suggestion? Two things are going to happen on Friday or Monday. Gateway's refused, that's the end of the matter. You don't need to do one, two or three. Nothing needs to be done. Gateway is approved, it's going to go ahead, then my suggestion to you councillor is that the motion reads that if they are successful at the gateway, then one, we write to the CEO, then we consult with the, advise the community, inform the community, and then we write to the minister, shadow minister. But the thing is, again, if it's rejected on Friday, this is all academic. We're not doing anything. We're, we're not going to stir the matter up. Again, with all due respect, the decision is going to come out on Friday. It's now Wednesday night. If I'm going to send the letter, at best it's going to go out on Friday. It's going to look, I'm going to use the word academic, it's going to look very academic if they've been refused and I'm now asking them to withdraw. I, I really do believe that nothing we're going to do in one, two or three will make any difference to the determination of the panel. We've already submitted all our information to the panel. They're well aware of our position. No stone's been left unturned. So if the panel approved the gateway, then it's still got to go to the minister. They're in caretaker mode on, in, in basically two days' time. Nothing is going to happen until after the election. So it's not really, with all due respect, I don't even see it as being urgent because of that.
Yeah, the only thing that I'll say is urgent is point one. That's it. You know what I mean? Other, other than that, it's just other things that could wait.
Then again, it should be, if number one, Mr Mayor, is qualified, that if they are successful in Gateway, then we write.
I, I think personally, just move point one, don't rest the other points, and the other point two, three and four can come at the end of the month.
I, I second.
One second. Put the, put the microphone on police councillor, if you don't mind, just your microphone.
So, so you're suggesting leave one as is and then for points two, three and four, preface that by saying if it proceeds to Gateway?
Yeah, or move on to the next council meeting because they're not really the urgent things.
I have a question.
Yes, councillor Rhodes.
How, how hard did we try to bring Canterbury Bankstown into the picture with what is happening down there at Woodward Park, into the planning? How much did we do that? And can, are we missing the point? I don't think we're going to win in a court case. I don't think anybody is going to win. We've learnt long before this that it's through negotiation. Go back, talk to them, okay? And, and that's what I would be doing in this case. So this, I, I, I cannot vote for it. You know, if councillors can't sit on a planning panel, you know, I don't think that councillors can be manipulative here to get the result that they wanted to get.
Point of order, I think it's really inappropriate to refer to this as being manipulative.
I didn't see.
Get a certain outcome.
No, I didn't, look, overall, I don't see, I think, I don't see it being manipulative.
I'll take back those words, sorry.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, well, look, Mr Mayor, I agree with you. Just move number one. Because we have to be honest with ourselves. Not much we can do with the case in the hand of the Department of Planning. So the only things you can do now is just to talk to Canterbury League Club, bring them to the table. Hopefully we can achieve like a good result. If not, so then you can lobby the minister, shadow minister, you can go and fight in the court and do whatever you like on behalf of the resident. But now the case in the hand of the Department of Planning, let's be honest, go and talk to the people. Hopefully we can do something about it. Not much. So I, I'm asking you, Mr Mayor, just to put the motion.
Point one, is point, I think if point one is the urgent part, the other points, bring them to the, there's only, the meeting's in three weeks' time. Excellent. All right, great. Mover and secondor, secondor happy with that? Great. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, which is just point one, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried.
I'm one against.
One against, two, two. Would you like your names recorded against it?
I think that would be helpful. I would like the names of those recorded.
Yeah, we can stand. We'll make a division on it if you like.
Division?
Yeah. No, we're, no, we're writing it now. That's the urgent part. We're basically saying to them, we said no to you guys. Send, send, well, anyway. Yeah. All right, let's put the motion, the, the division's been called. All those in favour, please stand. Are you standing? Yeah?
Thank you, councillor Calander.
Yeah. Those against? Done. You put me down as, as abstaining. Done.
He wants to vote against it too.
Lovely. Thank you. Councillors, I, um. Thank you, councillors. The, just what they call it, I need to under clause 17.14 of the Code of Meeting Practice. I'd like to recommit my mayoral minute. I made a slight error in it. So if we can just go back to the mayoral minute, and if you've got a copy of that councillor Calander. It was just on point three. We should say that council supports the Parramatta to Western Sydney Airport line and notes that three additional stations could be part of that line running through Liverpool LGA. Well, it is three o'clock. Cool. Can I, pardon? Yep, might as well. All right, I'll call a fifteen-minute recess. Thank you. All right. All right, thank you, everyone. So we've, we've already had this discussion, unless anybody wants to add anything more to it. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, the mayor declared carried, just calling for division, all those in favour? Against? So, against it, yeah. Yep. I declare the motion carried. So we'll now move on to questions with notice. Page one, question one seventy-five, councillor Green. Question two.
Excuse me, excuse I?
Sorry, you're excused, I'm just getting back into it.
Excuse me, Chair. I'm very happy with the response, and I'm pleased to hear that the Acting Ombudsman and Acting Coordinator of Cooperative Governance has been attending the training and been tasked to develop the tools and the training. I'm also pleased that council has nominated to be a pilot on the programme. And these are important steps at the implementation of the new public disclosure, Public Interest Disclosure Act. Acknowledge council's current measures, including posters and screensavers to remind staff to speak up if they see wrongdoing, which is well and good. But I'm curious about how safe and confident staff might feel to speak up, which is a distinctly different issue, as is trust and confidence in the process when one does speak up. Earlier last year, in the restructure process, there was discussion about a staff satisfaction survey. I'm wondering, has that been undertaken?
Councillor, yes, in fact, a number of surveys have been undertaken, there was a survey undertaken, and I'm happy to, to meet with you and discuss that further offline, if you like, in relation to council staff on an anonymous basis. That's also been discussed with the unions, we've canvassed most of that. It was interesting from one of the last surveys that the major concern of staff was to do with uncertainty of the structure, uncertainty of the CEO, acting CEO, uncertainty of the directors. And all of the consultation with staff, union delegates, the unions, et cetera, have clearly indicated that because of the new executive, if I can use that term, and what's happening and council for new executive, and during the consultation of the new structure, incredibly positive. So that answers the first part. In relation to the second part of your question, council staff are encouraged, the council staff are also encouraged if they to come and either see myself, see their union delegates, see the union, see any manager director if they have any issues. And we treat those with absolute sensitivity. We are one of the few councils that have the internal ombudsman system working with this. There've been, even in my short time here, there've been two or three situations where having the internal ombudsman acting at the moment, really has helped the staff enormously in being able to deal with some of those issues and properly attend to those issues.
If it's not covered in the training, I'm just wondering in the next staff satisfaction survey, if questions about, you know, how safe, about staff's safety and confidence in making disclosures and their confidence in the process of, of the handling disclosures. I think, just think because it sends a really clear message that, that, you know, that this is something council is committed to. And that, you know, that we, we value staff who will speak, who do speak up. Because I think largely, you know, people do the right thing. But if there is something that staff want to report, that they have the confidence, I can talk about this, I know who to go to, and I know that it's a protected disclosure.
Thank you, councillor, that is all happening. Again, you know, and I do want to thank the unions and the union delegates who really have been working very closely with myself and my team in relation. It is a very different position today, if you speak with them, than it was six weeks ago. It's very positive and moving continually forward.
And I understand all that too, but I was just concerned about, you know, we can, we say we have a culture of encouraging to speak up, but it's how we go about it and making sure that our staff are, do feel encouraged and safe to do so.
Thank you, councillor. Wonderful, okay, great, next one is councillor Hagerty. Next one counts, he's not here, councillor Harrell, question three, oh. Oh, is it, sorry, my apologies.
I just had a couple of additional questions on that. When it refers to hedges being attended to, when notified, I'm assuming that this is via resident complaints to customer service. Is there a proactive way that staff, through staff observance, when engaged in other activities, that they see that there are areas that need attention?
Thank you, I'll ask the Acting Director of City Presentation to respond to that.
Thank you for the question through the CEO, I'm actually quite excited to respond to this question. We're doing a parks review, which council is aware of. That's also mentioned in our operational plan, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. I'm finalising that review now, and it will have in it significant outcomes in relation to how we manage predictive and reactive maintenance programmes, including how that, that maintenance programme seamlessly interface with our customer service response. That is closing the circle from somebody ringing the customer service team through to the end result with photographic evidence and a timeframe around that. In relation to the current situation, we are experiencing some legacy service debt in relation to getting everything down to a maintainable standard. But some of the metrics and the systems we're putting in place will, no doubt, please, counsel on the next occasion.
Thank you for that information. My other question was in relation to waterways and creeks. How do we monitor the health of these waterways? And what of rubbish, et cetera, and that might impede the flow in heavy rains and/or flooding events?
The Acting Director? Yeah, I'll take that one on, on notice, particularly given, given the, the frequency of flooding events over the last few years. I understand there is, there has been some action in relation to that, but I'll take that on notice and I'll refer back.
Councillor Harrell, you got a question?
Yes, on, on that same thread, I have some issues, for instance, with street sweeping. We don't seem to be doing that on a regular enough basis. And the end result of that is, particularly in areas where you've got a large number of trees lining the roads, the leaves drop into the gutters, they end up into drainage pits, which then means the maintenance on sucking the rubbish out of those is compounded. I think we, I haven't seen a street sweeper for quite some time. I, I know to get a street sweeper, you need to book it in. But I think it should be better than that, I think the street sweepers should be on a continual basis. You know, picking up the rubbish that's in the streets, the amount of rubbish that goes into the drainage system is enormous. If you look at some of the gross pollution traps around the place, you know, it, it just means, where, where does that come from? It comes from the streets, which means I think we need to be a little bit more proactive in the street sweeping we had. We had four of them, I believe there's only one now, but maybe you have a programme that does that.
Acting Director? Yeah, thank you, through the CEO, thank you for that question again. That's, there's also some interesting movements in relation to street sweeping. One of the things that I observed in the operational plan is a service level agreement with our community. So I've mapped that now to a series of KPIs, which are written, written in the industrial instrument. So there's a KPI working group going through, exactly identifying what is our reasonable expectation internally, not only to the, to the, the end consumer, but internally to council about how often we should be sweeping streets. Yes, there is movement also in relation to new machinery. And only this Wednesday, sorry, next Wednesday at seven thirty, if you're down at Rose Street Depot, you'll see one of Australia's first electronic street sweepers in action, which we're engaging in Liverpool.
Yeah, just a comment, I'd like to thank the Acting Director, because I think that he's accomplished a great deal in the short time that he has been here. I point out that the Comprehensive Parks Operation Review has been underway since two thousand and twenty-one, okay? And I thank also the council staff for putting together the register for, of matters requiring reports to council, because that is all documented in that report. And I look forward to still getting the Comprehensive Parks Operational Review when it's, when it's brought to council. Because I can see that we're actually making headway, we've got direction and we're moving in the right direction. Implemented in, or supposedly brought in to be implemented in two thousand and twenty-one, here we are, two thousand and twenty-three. I don't know how long the Acting Director has been in his job, but I think that's, well, I think that's worth noting, thank you.
Councillors, can I put, and just to point out that I think we all see this from our community, they're expecting a better level of service with regards to the maintenance of our facilities, better, more street sweeping and better grass cutting, so on and so forth. So I think we as a board, you know, need to be focusing on that, back to basics. And can I just be mindful that, you know, when we're putting up motions or we're asking for reports and things like that, that it digresses the staff, you mean? And so I think, you know, I think we might feel the pressure as councillors talking to me that we need always come up with something new at a council meeting. But I think allowing the staff a clear run and letting them focus on this should be a priority, because you'd want to hope in, you know, dare I say, six months' time, that we should never have to worry about cutting grass ever again or potholes and stuff, so. So, yeah, and obviously in the next budget, get some more money to them, I'm sure will be, will be helpful always.
All right, next one, question three, councillor Harrell. Councillor Green, Caliander, question four.
I just had a question around, so engaging with different levels of, of government. What sort of, has, has there been discussion around shared initiatives? Or any way that food insecurity can be addressed by not just, not just at a council level?
Thank you, I'll ask the Director of Community and Culture.
Thank you, through the CEO, I'll have to take it on notice. I do know that the Fairfield Interagency Group meet and talk about shared initiatives, but I don't have the data on hand, but I can get that for you.
Cool. Uh, question five and six, councillor Caliander? Or do you want to go, sorry, question five, sorry?
Uh, yes, so I guess. That question is more for my fellow councillors as well, do we all agree to inviting expressions of interest for local restaurants and cafes to provide us with, you know, refreshments before the meetings?
Can I ask a question? I think this is a good, a good idea, because I know that our local cafes are struggling, so it would be something that we could help. But we have problems, I think, that in getting services for council, it isn't just like ringing them up and organising it. I think they've got to be known as a, as a supplier. So, and we wouldn't want to just give it to one or two, because that's, that's not really servicing the point. So how difficult would it be for council to, I don't know how many cafes would be included in it, but give them, how much difficulty is it in getting the expression of interest and doing all those formalities that council has to do to be able to do this or to make that available to a number of cafes in the Liverpool CBD?
Thank you, councillor, if I could just respond, Mr. Mayor. We will have a look at this, you saw the answer to the question, councillor, I will look at it. If I could indicate that, of course, consistency is really important for councillors. Your health and safety is incredibly important, and we're talking about dealing with food, and we're talking about food being catered in, et cetera. So let's have a look at this, obviously if we can support, we will support. But I can assure you that any food being served here is coming from one of the local businesses, it's not coming from anywhere else.
That's fine, my, I guess my concern is that we also don't want to pick favourites or be seen to be picking favourites, if that's, if, you know, if that's the way to, to frame it. And so I guess part of, you know, why I raised this was also to kind of, I guess, assist not only councillors, but also council, council staff perhaps to see the, you know, the wide variety of different types of foods and cafes and restaurants that are within our city. So I, I think that would be slightly defeated by awarding catering services to one. So I understand what you say about consistency.
Can I, can I just interrupt you for a moment? I think the, the objective is local procurement and sharing it around.
Yeah.
And catering is probably a small amount compared to what we actually procure. So I don't want to get down to a procurement policy, that what we can do, maybe this is something we discuss in one of our communities in depth, how do we procure more, procure more things locally and give business an opportunity to do it?
As I said, councillor, I'll look at it carefully and consider it, there are a number of options. One of the options may be to simply pick one venue for a period of two or three meetings, then another one. Let me have a look at it, it's a bit difficult, we could talk about this for hours. Let me have a look at it and then I'll come back to you.
Yes, but I do want to make sure that in terms of the intention of raising this question was not so, you know, the catering services could be awarded to one organisation or another.
No, no, I, I, I think it's important that we have variety and that, you know, local businesses have an opportunity to participate in that. From a cost effective, from a reality point of view, I'd love to have five different catering places, send me one course each and you've got your five courses in front of you, but it's not realistic. So let me have a look and I'll get back to you. But again, for me, it's consistency, it's, you know, health and safety, these are the two paramount considerations.
Sorry, Mr. CEO, I don't know what you guys did in the upper house, but we don't have five courses here.
Will there be a panel of testers for?
I was counting.
Question six, councillor Caliander, Philip Spark.
So, just to confirm, it was open today?
Oh, yes, it is the first of March, has the grass worked now?
Yes.
Yes? It works, they can play, the fences are down?
Through the CEO, the contractor in charge of removing the fence actually got into a vehicle accident this morning, so they weren't able to remove all the fencing.
I drove past this morning, it wasn't there.
So they can get on.
I drove past this morning, it wasn't there.
We pray for their good health and hopefully.
That's right, they're, they're fine, they're, they're accounted for. Their vehicle isn't unfortunately, so it might take a few more days to remove all the panels, but the panels have been removed for access already, yep.
The important aspect is that the various sporting groups have been notified and it starts. And, and we've done some good work with the operator of the cafe who, you know, sadly was the one most prejudiced apart from the children not being paid on it. So that's all under control, quite a bit of work's been done in that respect, and I'm really thrilled. The initial indication was end of April, and I'm, I'm thrilled that they, you know, through council staff, et cetera, we've been able to bring that right up to today.
In relation to sort of procurement, and I'm going to be very careful with my words here, because, you know, I think some of it potentially should go into confidential session. Oh, sorry, I said, in sort of relating this back to procurement, and I'll be very careful with my words because I'm conscious we're not in confidential session. How can we make sure that we learn from the experiences of, say, Philip Park in terms of how we, we manage that?
Councillor, quite a number of lessons have been learned from this. Unfortunately, one can't control what weeds grow and when weeds grow, but we are looking at aspects of that nature. Other lessons being learned, other lessons being considered, is should artificial grass be considered from day one? These are the, these are very valid questions that should have been considered at the time. But we are where we are, my priority was to get the park open, my priority was to get the kids on the park, and my priority was to help the tenants. And my priority was to help the tenants of the centre to be able to benefit from all the things we promised them was going to occur. That's happening.
I keep forgetting to turn on the microphone, but in relation to procurement specifically.
Yes.
Yeah.
Great, wonderful. Munam, move on to the noms. Nom zero one, page 186, councillor McNaul.
I'd like to move that way, Mr Mayor, with slight amendments.
Yes.
I'd like to add a point four and a point five. If we, and I haven't, please feel free to help me with the wording, anybody. If we could also, in point four, encourage community donation to this appeal as well, whether that be through social media channels or council's regular media outlets that we use, whether we could just encourage some, you know, lead by example, that council, should we pass this motion, council will be donating these funds and encourage the community to do so. And a point five, if we could please observe a moment's silence for the victims of this tragedy.
Wonderful, thank you. And can I ask through the CFO, to, our second councillor, Moon? Just through the CFO, should we do this from the, the general funds or should we just use our, our sponsorship budget? Because we've got, I think there's $300,000 left there, grants and sponsorships.
That's a matter for council, Mr Mayor. If you want to, if you want to change that, you can do it.
There's still money in there, isn't there? Yeah. Yeah. Can I recommend councillor McNaul? That we just, rather than just from general funds, just make it from the grants and donations budget?
Absolutely, that's fine.
Yeah, second or happy? Yeah.
Can I ask a question? And I think this is a very important question and I thank councillor McNaul for bringing it to, to council. I know one of the complicating factors is that part of the affected area is, is that it's an active war zone. How can we, I guess, make sure that some of the most vulnerable people don't fall through the cracks? Because I know certain, you know, aid organisations or certain, certain, you know...
Yes.
Things can't get to certain places because firstly, it's a war zone and secondly, you know, there, there are restrictions on, on how they can be accessed. So how can we make sure that they get to where it's needed?
Councillor, the general rule is this, we, for example, can't decide where the 20,000 goes and who it goes to because it would cost us far more than the 20,000 to have people on the ground to be able to do that. It would eat up the whole 20,000 and a lot more, so no one would get anything. What's absolutely imperative is that you pick the right organisation. You, you cannot fault Aus Relief in any shape or form. They're there, they're on the ground. They know exactly what they're doing. And the 20,000, it'll be a part of many other contributions that they're receiving, that they will collate together and do what they can do. And we have to accept that that's the best way to deal with it. So whether you do Aus Relief, whether you do Red Cross, you pick, you pick one of those organisations. Councillor, in her motion, has picked Aus Relief. You know, I can't find any reason why you wouldn't do that.
Do we, so I, I guess that is the more appropriate question. How can we be sure that Aus Relief is directing aid towards...
I've had some communication with Aus Relief prior to submitting the motion and I know that they've been on the ground from the very outset of relief. I've had some communication about how the needs are changing over time. So I have definitely considered where we would donate this to.
Councillor, I'm very well aware of Aus Relief and very well aware of their reputation. You know, my job as the CEO is that if I had any doubts about the organisation, I would have raised it at this meeting.
Thanks. Councillor Rhodes?
Yeah, I thank councillor McNaul for raising this, this motion. And on that point, we're seeing a greater increasing number of national and international disasters. For instance, we've also got New Zealand and the floods that they've been devastated by. I'm just wondering if we need a policy somewhere along in the future. If these disasters are going to keep on happening, how we make the decisions of donations and what amounts that we give. It's just if we could at some time get a report back on that and also a report on a financial year basis, the number of grants that we gave to national and international disasters, just so that we can keep an eye on it from a budgetary point of view from council.
So I can tell you, councillor Rhodes, that since my involvement with council as elected official, we would probably get one or maybe two a year from one of these scenarios.
Yep.
That we've done and it's 10 or $20,000 each time. So it's, yeah, so that's generally what it's been over the last decade or so, councillor Hall.
So we need just to check that to see whether it is growing or whether it isn't. So that's what's my point.
Well, we can, we can, I guess, we'll talk, we'll go through that during the committee and...
In a committee, that would be...
Because we can put, we can put that into the, the policy. So there's a point we can add to the grants and, the grants and donor, donor policy.
But on the, the basis of New Zealand and the flood, should we also be donating some money to them? They're our closest neighbour, they come over to help us during times of our disasters.
I think, I think that's for, if anybody wants to move that way, that's up to a councillor, but...
Well, I wonder if councillor McNaul would allow a addition?
I just, I think there's, not, not saying anything bad about New Zealand or what's happened, but you've got 40,000 human beings who have passed away.
Oh, absolutely. This is why I brought up the point, what is the equivalent amount?
Yeah, yeah. This one, just councillor Hall, I'll get to you. Councillor Hall?
Yes, just, just a slightly different point of view. Instead of us contributing to an, to a single organisation that we deem is the appropriate organisation, we need to keep in mind that the federal government actually contributed several million dollars to any of these disasters and they have in the past. Wouldn't it be more advisable to check to see who they are using to put that money? Or even if we were to give it to the federal government to decide where to put it? I think they would take into consideration the points of view about whether it's a war zone or not and whose side you give it to.
Councillor, can I assure you that Aus Relief is very much one of the organisations, state, federal, are used on numerous occasions. It, it is a well-recognised, you know, Australian relief organisation that supports internationally. Councillor, if I can also, in relation to yours, these matters need to come in by way of motion separately. It's not a matter of suddenly if a motion appears, you add on. At the time this motion is, first comes to my attention, I have to check a number of matters and I have to check to ensure that one, we have the funding to, where the funding source should come from, et cetera. Is the organisation the appropriate organisation? Now, I have absolutely no idea if Aus Relief can in any way provide the assistance in New Zealand. They may be a better organisation. So if you're going to move that motion, I would suggest that that's a separate motion that's moved and the inquiries are made as to what would be the best organisation for New Zealand. As councillor Hall said, there may already be a number of organisations with boots on the ground who are already doing work. So it's just quite risky from my respectful submission to just simply start adding to this motion.
Sorry. No, thank you very much for your advice and I can appreciate that. I'll put it as a question, if council can report back about the New Zealand flood and any possible assistance the council might be able to give them and through any appropriate channel. And I am in favour of the motion supported by...
All right, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried and we'll leave the men in the silence to the end if that's all right, please. Right. Next item, nom two, councillor Rhodes, page 188, online confidentiality. Moving that way?
Yes, I'm moving that way.
Do you have a second, or a second councillor, Moon?
Also, this is something that should be brought up with the local government office because it is their issue. This is an issue that we could take to the local government association. So I don't know whether we need to put that in it.
Yep, sorry, the CEO would like to make a suggestion.
Councillor, may I suggest one amendment?
Yep.
Realistically, to, caretaker vote starts in a few days' time. May I suggest that item two reads, upon receipt of the response from the Office of Local Government, then council investigates and report back to council at its next meeting.
I love it.
You're not going to get an answer before May.
Second or happy with that? Yep, great. All right, I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Against, I declare it carried. Next item is nom three, councillor Rhodes, page 193.
Uh, yes, and there is a report, a progress report coming back on this. I'll wait till I see that progress report, but to me, there is no reason why we should not be.
Second or councillor McNaul, discussion, all those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. So now we will, we have five confidential items. Let's see how we go, if we need to move in a closed session or not. The first one is on page, in the confidential booklet, Conf 01, about law government elections, page 438. I'm happy to move that we use a, we do not use, we do not use the electoral commission and we go out to other entities.
Happy to second that motion.
Well, I'm happy to speak for my motion. You've had the electoral commission who's just run a, who has run an election. I've seen, unfortunately, I've seen a lot of elections. I think it could have been done better and we've seen that they've had a significant failure in their systems, which have led to other councils having to do re-elections because of failure of IT systems.
Move into a closed session?
That doesn't need to. That's, that's public knowledge and public, you mean, widely reported. You can speak against it if you like, councillor.
Well, there's also the, the issue that to go out to a private provider, we're actually paying more. As, you know, we're, we're just saying that we're wanting to achieve a zero debt ratio by the 2025. I mean, one could say that no system is, is perfect, but I would have more trust in the electoral commission running the council election than a private provider. There's only two councils in the state thus far that use a private provider. I wouldn't like us to see walk down the path and be number three.
From my understanding, there's a lot more councils that are doing it at this point in time and without, yeah. I imagine we'd have to go to, we'd have to go to a tender before, you know, to lock in any of these sort of prices, but these are just imagined estimates. Councillor Caliander?
I, obviously, we're not sure whether online voting will be an option for the 2024 elections or not. But having, you know, participated during the campaign for the 2021 election, I spoke to a number of residents who were trying to vote from Fairfield. You know, did not understand that there was not an electronic, electronic or online option and who were very distressed at not being able to vote because they were out of area on election day. And I, I, it is actually concerning to me to think that that could be potentially Liverpool residents in 2024. I think, you know, there is a certain, there's a, there's a lot that we can gain from being part of a broader group of councils, using a tried and trusted organisation that is, you know, non-partisan, that, you know, that, not saying this other company is, but yeah, that there's a lot of concern that I have in going to this, this, this other model given what I, what I saw residents experience during the 2021 elections.
Councillor Rhodes?
Yes, I'd like to speak for the motion again, based on our experience from the 2021 election. Yes, we did trust the electoral commission. Were we let down? Yes. There was occasions when you had a dual electoral position or place to go and vote that was changed without any sort of information to voters and they were turning up expecting to be able to vote at that particular venue and they couldn't. We had different rules enforced for different venues that, you know, depending upon the person that was in the position of monitoring and making sure that all the councillors were doing the right thing, that was different from one place to the next. It caused a lot of confusion and it made people very unsettled. And when we look at the other councils that weren't with the electoral commission, they were, they didn't have the same issues. We have tried the electoral commission and I think based on the 2021 election, I think we should at least get the information, look at it and certainly give, as other councils are doing, the opportunity to other providers.
But the 2021 election, we were in COVID. I mean, people were not really clear. Yes, it, it did vary, but because people had different interpretations of what they were supposed to be doing. And as for the statement or the claim that other councils that didn't use the commission didn't have those, I'd like to see the report on that. I mean, I'm not, you know, the claims need to be verified.
I'd like to see the report that there wasn't confusion at the last 221 election underneath the electoral commission. Yes, they were confused because it did not have that clear direction by the provider. That's the point.
All right, all right. Thank you, councillors. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare the motion carried. Division, all those in favour, please stand. Against? His hands up. No, no, you stay, I'm just saying. I'm sorry. Lovely. Next item is Conf 02, page 460, with a recommendation on page 461. Move Deputy Mayor, second councillor Goodman, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against? No good? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare it carried. Conf 03, page 465. Move Deputy Mayor, second councillor Goodman, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare it carried. Conf 04, page 471. Move Deputy Mayor, second councillor Harrell, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declare it carried. Next item is Conf 05.
That's a different booklet, I think.
That's the urgent.
Should we move into closed session to discuss this?
If you don't speak in specifics, we don't have to, in the sense as in identifying the property and what it's about, but I think we can...
Well, I'm happy to let it, to see how it eventuates.
Yep. Someone want to move the motion? Move councillor Goodman, you have a second or... Well, we got to choose A or B. It's in the, it's in the, this is the booklet that came through, it's the confidential addendum booklet that came through as an urgent item from the staff.
We, we don't know enough information might be the, the point.
I prefer to move.
Once again, if no, if no one is saying specifically what exactly it is, we can, can we speak about A and B vaguely or do we have to go on to closed session for it? All right. You want to move that we go on to closed session?
Yes, please.
Under section...
10B of...
10? 10? 10? Yeah. Why is that different? 10A?
14.1.
No. Why isn't it here?
So are we in closed?
No, not yet. Just trying to find the exact clause, sorry. Why is it in this one?
No, there's a clause, you got a quote.
Yep. Under there? Oh, under the act. It's under the act. Oh, okay. So we'll move that we go into, for call five, into closed session on the section 10A2C of Law Government Act because it contains information that would have disclosed, conferred commercial advantage on the person with whom council is conducting or proposing to conduct business. Move councillor Green, second councillor McNaul, all those in favour? Move councillor Green, second councillor McNaul, all those in favour? Against, I declare it carried.
Can we have a, can we have a copy of that section email to us? Just so that we've got it there for reference?
Yeah, 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 it's a good point. I thought it was in the Code of Meaning practice, but it's in the, the act, but I thought the act, I thought the Code of Meaning references it. If I could please ask the residents. The amount indicated in the contributions plan. Three, council authorises, delegate officers, so execute any documentation under the power of attorney necessary to give effective decision. Four, council keeps confidential this report pursuant to sections, sections 10A2C of Law Government Act 1993, as this information would, if disclosed, confer commercial advantage on a person with whom council is conducting or proposing to conduct business with, on being put the motion was carried, declared, carried. Thank you everyone. If I could please ask everyone to please stand for a minute of silence. Thank you, everyone. That being said, I now declare the meeting officially closed. Thank you.